I'd like to call to order the December 4th, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand if you wish as PA, I mean Commissioner Williams provides invocation and then introduces our next guest.
I invite everybody to pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of today and this life. We'd ask that you be with us now as we consider the business of the city. Help us to do it with wisdom and guidance that whatever we do will bring honor and glory to thy holy name. As we go into the holiday season, may we always remember the reason for that season. Thank you for everything you do for us. Keep us all safe by months of missive, and we'll be sure to give thee the praise and honor and glory for it all. In Jesus' name I ask. Amen. Now, if you would, I'm gonna have my grandsons Hunter and Easton lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you so much.
Good job. I think your mom is... Did you, did you want a picture? Huh? Okay.
That was great, guys. Thank you. All y'all did... Hey, wait, wait, man. That was great. There you go.
Thank you so much, Hunter and Easton. We appreciate you leading us in the pledge tonight. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Denning, absent. Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Do you have any awards or recognitions tonight, other than the one you mentioned to me earlier?
Yeah, well-mentioned. As some of you may have noticed, we were one of 25 cities that you have to see at Christmas, according to the Active Times Magazine. So, we're getting some press on our Christmas decorations and the way we do Christmas here, so that's good. I will also like to, while I've got the time, to again remind everyone of our open house coming up this Friday afternoon from 3:30 to 5:30, and then from there, we'll have the lights up going on downtown around the square and lots and lots of other activities this coming Friday night. So invite everybody down, spread the word. We've tried to get it out as much as possible, but everything starts here at 3:30, and should be a good time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any awards or recognitions? Do you have any comments, Mr. Maslow, for tonight?
I do not. No need for close sesh or anything.
All right. Approval of the minutes for our November 20th, 2018 meeting?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Items for consideration include the second reading of Ordinance BG 2018-46.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapters 2 Administration, Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations, and Chapter 17 Personnel Policies of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to rescind language related to the Administrative Appeals Board and to revise language providing for appeals to the board.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. As a reminder, on the second reading, this is a deletion of a board we hadn't met. I don't think in the entire time I've been on the commission, and we'll remove those duties from them and return them to the city manager. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2018-240.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Chad Haley to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer Senior, and Mitchell Davenport to the position of Crew Supervisor 1 in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Maslow.
Parks has two promotions, two promotion opportunities available due to another promotion and retirement. I'd like to ask Brent Belcher to come up and make his recommendations.
Brent Belcher.
It's not Brent.
Is that Brent Belcher?
Hold pause for any still photography, so you guys can make sure this is me. I am, I am Brent Belcher. So anyway, thank you for having me here tonight. This is one of those unique times that we get to come up to you and do promotions for Parks and Rec. This is a proud moment for all of us in our department, and today is no different than that. Both of our recommendations are here, so I'll ask them to stand after I read through some of the backstory. So first and foremost, our first recommendation is Chad Haley. Chad started with us. Well, I guess a little bit of backstory at that. We had promotion. That was Jeremy Owens became a heavy equipment operator. We did publicly advertise, got 11 applications received. Six of those were transferred to Parks and Rec. Three of those were selected for interviews. Myself, Kathy Maroney, and Tiger Thule did those interviews, and of course, we are proud to recommend Chad Haley for this position of a Parks Facility Maintainer Senior. That is a crew leader in our cemetery division. And I think the public, anybody that travels on Cemetery Road knows the care and workmanship that that staff does for those facilities and those grounds. It's one of the, obviously, we, it ranks highly in the proud element for the city throughout the residents and visitors. I think when everybody passes through, it's something everybody takes notice of, and it's due to their work and efforts. He'd become a crew leader there. He's been working with us since 2013. He actually started as a part-timer at Crosswinds Golf Course. Once again, may I plug in for part-timers, we hire a lot of part-time staff, and this is a great way to prove your work ethic and your dedication and customer service, and good things happen to good people, and Chad's evident in that today. Two years as at Crosswinds, he then got hired as full-time in 2015 as a Parks Maintainer. And once again, at the cemetery, he's been with us since that time doing his job. Chad is here today, and once again, I'll ask him to stand after this next recommendation, which is right beside him, which is Mitchell Davenport. Mitchell would be recommended for Crew, Cemetery Crew Supervisor 1. That is the lead maintenance supervisor of our cemetery division. Very important position. That would be the right hand or left hand, whichever way you want to look at it, of Kathy Maroney, which is our cemetery division manager. They will lead all of our services there. We advertised, got 28 applications. Nine of those transferred to Parks and Rec for consideration. Five were chosen for interviews. Myself, Kathy, and Tiger did those interviews as well. Once again, proud to be here to recommend Mitchell. Some of his backstory, he's been in the cemetery division since 2003. He actually began prior to that, two years of part-time employment, once again, in the Parks Maintenance Division. Mitchell was promoted in 2008 as a Parks Maintainer Senior, which is actually a position that Chad's taken now, or one of those positions, same position. He's been performing at commendable level since then. He's highly knowledgeable, exemplifies great customer service on a daily basis. One thing about Mitchell and Chad is customer service is a premium to both those individuals, and that's why we're here today. I ask both those gentlemen to stand if they would, please. I think they're in their work clothes because they just got off work.
Thank you for being here, gentlemen. And any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations to you. After your hard work. Next up is Municipal Order 2018-241.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Joseph Schmidt to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Mr. Maslow.
This is position to backfill Chad's position. I'd like to ask Erin Holsey, our Human Resource Director, to come up and make the recommendation.
Good afternoon. I would like to recommend the appointment of Joe Schmidt to Parks Facility Maintainer in the cemetery division. Getting a lot of faces and new promotions and appointments in the cemetery tonight. So, as Jeff said, it's due to Chad Haley's promotion. The Parks Facility Maintainer operates equipment, dump trucks, tractors, mowers, performs routine repairs, maintenance, construction duties, and also provides assistance with the funerals, setting up tents, and coffin lowering, also, of course, customer service, comfort to the people who were there at the time. We posted the position. We received 29 applications. We considered eight applicants for an interview. The interview panel consisted of Brent Belcher, Kathy Maroney, Mitchell Davenport from Parks and Tiger from HR. We're recommending Joseph Schmidt. Joe, if you would like to stand. Joe has been employed with the Parks Department for two years as a part-time laborer, so another story to show how part-time work leads to great other positions. He's also had jobs as a college instructor, an ESL teacher in Turkey, and a restaurant cook. He has a great work ethic and job performance, and he's an excellent candidate for this position.
All right. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Congratulations, Joseph. Private. Municipal Order 2018-242.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Philip Terrence to the position of Company Commander, and Larry Ware to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator in the Fire Department.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second, excuse me, Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Maslow, sorry.
I'd like to first thank Chris Gray is retiring from the Fire Department. He's a Company Commander, became effective December 1st, and we're here tonight. As you know, when there is a retirement in the Fire Department, a lot of times that's the domino effect, so I'd ask Chief Coulson to come up and make his recommendation for promotions.
Good evening. As Mr. Maslow mentioned, Chris Gray, recent retirement, started a transition in the suppression division. With that, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to present recommendations of promotion to you for Company Commander and Fire Apparatus Operator positions. Promotional testing for each of these positions was recently completed with eight members competing, or and completing the process for Company Commander and 15 members for the Fire Apparatus Operator position. Promotional testing consists of a written exam and an assessment of the member's performance while conducting various job-related tasks. Based on the results of the promotional testing, as well as their performance throughout the course of their careers with our department, I'm pleased to recommend Philip Terrence for promotion to Company Commander and Larry Ware for promotion to Fire Apparatus Operator. I'd like to share just a brief bio to recognize each of those members and a few accomplishments of them. So we'll start with Philip, and if I can get Philip to stand, please. Philip's originally from Morgantown, Kentucky. He attended Western Kentucky University and graduated in 2007 with a bachelor's degree in management. He came to work for the Bowling Green Fire Department that same year, and currently has 11 years with our organization. He was promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator back in 2014. Philip has completed numerous certifications and training during his tenure with the department. He's a certified EMT, he's a fire service instructor, and also is certified fire inspector through the State Fire Marshal's Office. He's been part of our technical rescue program periodically throughout his, throughout his career, and is one of our members specially trained in wildland firefighting. He was actually one of the members deployed to assist over in Eastern Kentucky back in 2016. With Philip's promotion, that will create an opening for Fire Apparatus Operator, and I'm pleased to recommend Larry Ware for this position. I'll get Larry to stand, please. Larry's originally from Pennsylvania. He joined the Army back in 1995, serving the country for over eight years. While in the Army, he was stationed in Fort Campbell where he met his wife, and they continued to reside in the Bowling Green area. He was hired by the department in 2006, and given him currently 12 years with our organization. Larry also has completed numerous certifications and specialty training. He's also a certified EMT, Fire Inspector, and has completed certifications as a driver operator for both our aerial and pumppers. Larry's been stationed at headquarters for the last couple of years where he's been extremely active in our technical rescue program. Mayor Commission, again, it is my pleasure to recommend both Philip and Larry for promotion within our department, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comments or questions? Call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for your hard work. Municipal Order 2018-243.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Alex Cook to the position of System Analyst in the Information Technology Department.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Mr. Maslow.
We recently had a departure of System Analyst. Actually, I think he got an offer from Google or somewhere like that, and so we have a vacancy in our IT department. I'd like to ask Erin to come back up and give her a recommendation for the appointment of this position. And I'd also like her to stay for the next one. There's also another appointment coming up after this, so...
Stay here. All right. Would like to recommend the appointment of Alex Cook to System Analyst. The System Analyst will provide primary overall support for assigned software applications, converts paper documents into electronic forms, trains employees as needed on the usage of purchased software, performs upgrades on software, assists with web server software upgrades and fixes, and will research new technology, software, and techniques and mechanisms that will help the city distribute its information to the public and to all city employees. We posted the position, and we received 42 applications. We reviewed eight resumes and interviewed them. We decided to bring two applicants back for a second interview, and the interview panel consisted of Lynn Hartley, Janita Weeks, Emily Woods, and Branson Ditsen from the IT Department, as well as Tiger from HR. I'd like to ask Alex to please stand. Alex is currently a senior at Western Kentucky University. He will graduate in May with a bachelor's degree in computer information technology. He's been employed by Fruit of the Loom in Bowling Green as a help desk analyst, and prior to that, he also worked at WKU at their help desk for two years. He's the best candidate out of all of the applicants due to his experience, education, and his ability to learn and grow within the role.
Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Even before you get out of school, you got your job right. All right. Municipal Order 2018-244.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Kelly Faust, Jamie Holton, Whitney Lindsay, McKenna Meredith, Catherine Neely, Elena Owens, and Ladonna Sanford to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Mr. Maslow.
All right. We are very delighted and excited to recommend the appointment of seven Communication Dispatchers to the Police Department. I first just really want to commend the recruiting team. Tiger Thule worked very closely with Amelia, as well as deputy chiefs on expanding the recruitment to try and find as many qualified applicants as we could. They had 154 applicants for Communications Dispatcher, which is fantastic. 51 applicants took the LESI. 14 applicants were selected for polygraph and background, and nine were selected for an interview. Seven have been identified as excellent candidates and are truly needed. The interview panel consisted of Michael Delaney, Penny Bowles, Amelia Bowen from Police, and Tiger from HR. Ladies, if you could stand as I call your name, Kelly Faust, Jamie Holton, Whitney Lindsay, McKenna Meredith, Catherine Neely, Alina Owens, and Ladonna Sanford.
Nice crew to see in our position. Are there any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
He stepped to get his phone charger, it's about to die on him.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations to all of you. Real excited. You got your job right. And please feel free to slip out if you want to. We've got a lot of other business to do here. Next is Municipal Order 2018-245.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of John Bailey to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. This is an appointment to the unexpired term of Dr. Jerry Coron, who decided to throw in the towel finally after many, many years of faithful service. We appreciate his work. John is a, not only a pilot, but a commercial pilot and a pilot instructor, and works at WKU and has been a pilot for the Drug Task Force, so we're excited for him to be a participant with us on that. Are there any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Not as fast as I used to be.
Next is Municipal Order 2018-246.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Deborah Peoples to the City of Bowling Green Board of Ethics.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Williams. This will replace Dan Rudloff, who's rotating off the board, and we thank him for his many years of service on the Ethics Board, and look forward to what Debbie can bring to the board as well. Are there any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2018-247.
Municipal Order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated Financial Statements ending June 30th, 2018.
I'll move.
Second.
Williams and Perigin got that first.
Oh, I apologize.
At the same time.
As part of the interlocal cooperation agreement we have on the ITA due to us issuing general obligation bonds for the debt on the trans park, we partner with the county and the ITA to make it all happen, but we have in that agreement that the ITA will come to us and present annually their financial statements. Commissioner Perigin and I sat on the ITA board and have heard, heard the presentation of this, but I would like to ask Meredith Rozansky to come, give you a brief overview of performance this last fiscal year of the ITA.
Ms. K, thanks.
Thank you for having me. I greatly appreciate being here. All of you have been provided a copy of the ITA's audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, 2018, sorry. And it is a clean opinion. By CPA rules and regulations, I can't speak to the work that the auditors did. We're happy to have Carl Riggs come and present that to you if you'd like, but we did receive a clean opinion as the ITA. In that audit that you received, the front part of it, there's what's called Management Discussion and Analysis that is prepared by me every year and goes through sort of the activity of the ITA and the financial statements. What I would tell you is that we are tracking very well. The wage assessment income is up over what we had budgeted for the year. That is the money that is the 1.5% occupational tax on those that are in the parks, sort of as a district, that funds the completion of the parks. So there are still many infrastructure projects that need to be done to finish out that industrial park, but we do have funding available for those projects. And the, if you look, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you, the actual audit? Okay, if you turn to page nine, you'll see the asset side of the balance sheet. Again, we are in a good financial position cash-wise. I'm going on down to the non-current restricted assets. That land held for industrial development in the trans park, that is the current value of the land that is remaining, which is about 300 acres of the original 900-acre park. And then if you turn over to page 10, you'll see the liability side of the balance sheet. And the major portion of the bond there relates to the bonds. The city and the county, as you guys know, you partner and pay half of the debt service on the bonds. This park would not be in existence without the city and the county putting that money up, and we are down to about $11 million left on that $25 million bond issue, which will sunset, it'll be paid off in September of 2023. If you turn over to page 11, you'll see the operating revenues and expenses. And there were two land sale transactions during the year. One, if you'll remember, we had Crown Verity, which is a high-end gas grill producer that is Canadian. They are locating just off of Commonwealth north of Bilstein. And then there was also a land sale to Carter Lumber, who is across from Bowling Green Metal Forming down on Cosma Drive. If you've driven on the new interchange lately, you've seen the huge campus that they put in there. It's really quite amazing. So if you haven't been out there, I would encourage you to go see it. Going on down again, that lease income is that money sort of coming in for the debt service on the bonds. And then under expenses, you'll see that there was a total of $2.8 million that was paid in interest and principal on the bonds during the year, and then the cost of those land sales that we just discussed, that carrying cost was $1.1 million. Overall, the ITA is in very good shape. We continue to work to land projects. We're actually currently working on one right now, so fingers crossed, but I'm happy to take any detailed questions that you had going through the financials.
ITA?
Well done.
I forgot to mention that Katie's also on the ITA Finance Committee and has heard this and reviewed this as well, so there's three of us that participate in those meetings, so...
Any comments or questions? Thank you, ma'am. Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Order 2018-248.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving a contract through non-competitive negotiations with DB Communications Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, for professional services in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Maslow.
Yes. DB Communications is a company we've been using for some time to assist us with, you know, running cables, connecting networks, all that kind of stuff. We have not formally done any kind of agreement or contract with them up until now, and we realize that we are paying, you know, significant dollars to DB, so we wanted to formalize this to you in the amount not to exceed $50,000 for the work that they assist us with on an annual basis. And I think Lynn is here, if you have any questions on this.
Make sure I understand, this is the amount that we may spend this year if we choose to do cable, like if we choose to pave a certain amount of streets we go through.
Right. Yeah, and a lot of cases, we'll do some in-house wiring, network wiring of facilities. Like when we renovated the annex, we did a lot of that ourselves with our IT department and DB Communications, as well as stuff at the Police Department. So we try to do as much in-house work as we can, but we also need from time to time assistance from DB Communications to pull that off, so that's what we use them for.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2018-249.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-22 for Preston Miller Park Outdoor Fitness Area from Play World Mist States LLC of New Albany, Ohio, in the amount of $250,200.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigin, second.
This is the project we've been working on out at Preston Miller for the outdoor fitness equipment. If you'll recall, we got $55,000 donations from, or total, from Clark Beverage, and also from the Kentucky Beverage Association we put towards this project. Brent Belcher's been working on this, and I'd like for him to step up and kind of give you an overview, actually maybe show you exactly what we're going to be doing out there. It's some pretty neat stuff with this outdoor fitness equipment. We had, I think, four bids, and this was an evaluated bid, and we are recommending the, I forget their name.
It's Play World is the name of the company.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brent.
Yeah.
I'll let you take it from here.
You're welcome. It's Play World Midstates is the name of the company. To give a little backstory, Jeff, Mr. Mizel just did that. But this has been an out-year CIP for us for a few years. Approached with the opportunity to do a partnership and grant through, it's actually the Healthy, if I'm getting it correctly, the Kentucky Beverage Association. It's the American Beverage Association is where it's doing with Clark distributors. Were instrumental in both those grants. And so it definitely has some local partnerships. Our key going into this is we wanted a, what I could say, a legitimate outdoor fitness workout facility. We, and I say that meaning that outdoor fitness equipment is not a new trend, but it's kind of a rebirth of this trend. This is something that's been around for a number of years. What is the, kind of the new part of it is, is the actual equipment itself. If you, it's more than chin-ups and push-ups and setups now. It's actually equipment. It's equipment that you would find relatable to indoor fitness facilities. It's leg presses. I actually have nine key exercises that are part of this, essential exercises that are part of this, which is a chest press, a lat pull-down, shoulder presses, bicep curls, tricep presses, leg presses, ab machines, ellipticals, and cardio walkers, which are exactly what you'd see in an indoor fitness facility. Play World Midstates offer additional nine freestanding pieces of equipment to those core things and another station that offers 18 additional exercises. In our opinion, in this evaluated bid, Play World Midstates, they were the only one that did the nine essential. They were the only one that provided other freestanding pieces of equipment, and they're the only one that offered the station. If you can see the overall or the aerial view of the equipment provided, they filled up our 50 by 60 space, and that was key to us. We wanted a lot of stuff. We wanted things that people could use. It's cardiovascular, it's strength training, it's stretching. It should be the entire gamut for a full and total workout. In addition, there's a 10 by 10 space you'll see kind of jets out to the side. That's open space. That's, again, that goes to your stretching. That allows the user to kind of dictate what they want to do, whether it's, you know, it may be whatever. And then last, the key to us, it's going to assist or at least be an asset to our current indoor bowling green park recreation facility that we have at 225 East Third Avenue. We're going to do some programming there. We're going to do some of our own things there and utilize this place. I do want to make one thing clear. This thing is for the public to use. This is a free public-use facility. And our staff will make sure that the entire public gets to use this facility. Because that's what it's there for. We're trying to make sure that the citizens of our community have a way to find some exercise. They can run around our one-mile trail at Preston Miller and then get some workout as well. So we think healthy living is a great part, and we want to do everything we can to improve the quality of life for our residents and visitors. I actually have, this is an aerial view. I do have a side view. I'm not sure which one gives you the best perspective of what we're putting. This one does. I like this one because, you may not be able to see my cursor, but the five pieces of equipment located right here, it is not by chance you see five wheelchairs there. Those are five handicap-accessible pieces of equipment. The great thing about those pieces of equipment is one side would be a shoulder press. The other side is a shoulder press with a seat for every body, and the other side is for handicapper, for a wheelchair. So it's one piece of equipment serving two individuals. And we think that's key because, once again, we're looking for the entire community to be able to have access and usage of this facility. And then I guess the last part, minus any questions you may have, would be just kind of giving you an aerial of where this would be located. This is, the new soccer fields are here. This is the sand volleyball courts that are at Preston Miller. This is the one-mile trail, asphalt trail, that goes around the perimeter of the park. As I zoom in. And the computer catches up with me. Okay, I mean, you go back just a little bit. It'd be right here in between the sand volleyball court. And actually, it's not there on this aerial, but the railing for the soccer field is just off of that. So it would be off, the access would be off of Tomlinson Way. And we feel like this is going to be a great addition to not only Preston Miller Park, not only Bowling Green Parks Recreation, but to this community. It'd be one, a unique piece of equipment in an area. And I guess one other thing I'd kind of do need to mention is a pour-and-play. The only surface we're going to have like that in Bowling Green. A pour-and-play is your spongy type of surface that gives a little buoyancy, a little bounce to users. It's our first. The next one's going to be our inclusive playground coming to Roland Bland. But this would be our first. Have a little shade structure and a bench. That sort of stuff is part of this as well. But we're excited about it, if you can't tell, and we're ready to get it going. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
When do you open to the public?
My goal is before the end of this fiscal year, by June. I say my goal, I have to wait until after this, when we get POs ordered and things. The only thing I'm hesitant about is I don't know how, I'm not sure they have this equipment in stock. And so I don't know how long it's going to take to manufacture some of this stuff. The pour-and-play surface, though, I can tell you that it does take a base level of temperature to actually be poured. So that, it's definitely not going to be in early spring. It'll have to be towards after weather has turned. The map you're showing us on the screen right now, I know it's not as up-to-date as it is out there, but there is, I believe, still between the parking lot and the track, a grass strip still exists. Will there be some accommodation for those that are in wheelchairs, can access over to the park? That's a great question. Yes, sir. We'll have walkways, we'll call them, towards this area, yes, sir, to ensure that we can get, yes, to accommodate those in wheelchairs. To those, if not only those five, those pieces of equipment, yeah, we'll want to make sure they get in there.
Else?
Brent, one quick question. I know that when you use exercise equipment at Parks and Rec now, people are asked to sanitize the equipment when they get through using it. Will there be any provision for anything like that for the outdoor equipment?
As far as the sanitation, that is not something that we're aware of at this point. I can tell, we visited, by the way, Cincinnati has a smaller fitness area like this. But what is key, and I thought this was, he was going to ask, is that there will be signs posted on proper usage of each machine. Now, keep in mind, these are not weights. You're actually pushing your body weight. That's the resistance, your body weight, not, so there's not a free weight section. So that'll be there. I do know, or I can tell you that this is considered a playground. So our certified playground instructors can act, will have to do this each month, have to do an inspection each month. So we'll have to check each piece of equipment to ensure that, you know, it's working properly. At that point in time, I think we would answer any issues with the surface. I would be probably more so on the surfacing than the equipment itself, but yes, sir.
I think anybody who might be wanting to use the equipment that might be worried about, you know, whether or not come in contact with other bodily fluids, would bring their own sanitizing devices.
Yes, sir.
Materials. Okay.
Also included, correct me if I'm wrong, is in this price is a canopy for shade.
Shade structure, yes, sir.
That will help in the dog days of summer, you know, when it's 95 degrees, you'd still have some shade coverage for people if you want to go out there and work out. So I thought.
Cover the entire area. It'll be like a triangular.
Yeah.
Call it a kite. So it's roughly a third of the facility should be covered.
Brent, how does the maintenance work for this? I just, you know, out in the elements with the, I know that it can't be the same machines.
It's similar to a playground, just like a swing and that sort of thing. Actually, there's very few, I mean, there's bearings. But outside of that, it's not different than the playground equipment. And that's the unique part of them, of these things. So that's why, the key thing is, why it's a playground company we're buying it from. They, you have to be certified to inspect them. So it's the exact same way that you inspect a swing or anything to do with any of our playground equipment. It really comes down to nuts and bolts.
I saw somebody earlier, just an informative thing on a Facebook post, saying that Ohio County actually has one of these also.
The concept is not a new concept, but it's going to be a, I will tell you one of the unique things about ours is the size and magnitude of it. Most are a little bit smaller. And ours, once again, with our usage or our desire was to make sure that it's going to make an immediate and definite impact on the community that's looking to get healthy.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal order 2018-250.
Municipal order authorizing a change order to the contract through cooperative purchase with AT&amp;T Cooperation of Conyers, Georgia, under the Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the Airbus Vista 911 phone system in the amount of $85,331 for a total project cost of $505,331.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perrigen, Mr. Mizel.
Back in 2017, you all approved the purchase of a new telephone system, 911 system, or the telephone piece of it at our 911 center for a total of $420,000. At the same time, we got a grant from Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for $245,000 to go toward the project. So this is something we've been working on for the last year. We're getting really close. Amelia Bowen is here tonight and can vouch for that. But what we're asking for tonight is an additional $85,000 in order to purchase two of these, what they call NICE recorders. This system is capable of recording, of course, your usual 911 calls, but it's also capable of eventually taking text 911 messages. And in order to record those text messages and create a permanent record, we need these, not what they call NICE recorders, to be able to capture those messages. And the cost of one, we're upgrading the one that we already have at Police right now to update it to get, to match up to the software. But we need an additional one for our backup station out at Greenwood to cover us on that. But we're looking at a total of $85,000. This was already part of the sole source from AT&amp;T, and that AT&amp;T contract was a state contract pricing. So we ask you today for approval to go ahead and approve this change order to purchase these two recorders to get us in where we need to be with being able to record everything. And Amelia's here, if you have any questions, along with Chief Hawkins. So Amelia, you got anything to add to that? Did I miss anything?
No, this is the upgrade at the police department and the additional unit at the Greenwood location. I wish we had it on the front end. But in the site survey, there was a little confusion on the recording, how it would work after the new system was in place, the new system's up and running. Thank you for that approval on that project. And with it going, we just realized we need the second one. So we'd just like to add that to our second location.
We have funds available in our two 911 funds, our E-911 and our landline 911 fund that we're going to use to cover this $85,000.
I think it's essential.
Would not be general fund, but if that matters.
We have to do something to be able to accept and record the text messages.
If we're going to spend the $420 to get this, you know, really good system, I think we need to go, you know, one more step and get the capability of recording all of the messages that are coming in.
Call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-251.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-29 for a citywide stormwater sewer GIS data validation and collection project from Civic Engineering and Information Technologies Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee, in the amount of $298,812.
So moved.
Second.
By Williams, second by Perrigen, Mr. Mizel.
We've talked about the MS4 mandates that have been pushed down on us for stormwater. This is one more of those mandates. It requires us to be able to know where all of our infrastructure is. We've done our best to map out what we have out there now currently in our storm sewer system for several years. But we need additional help for another firm to come in and validate what we have in our GIS system as well as capture the additional infrastructure that's out there. And so we went out for a bid, and this was an evaluated bid, mostly based on cost, but also experience and proposed scope of service. And we had, I think, how many bids? There were about five bids, six bids, and we are recommending Civic Engineering and Information Technologies, who are also partnering with a local firm here, as you know, DDS Engineering, to do this work for us. This is something, again, we're mandated to finish up. It's kind of pricey, but something we've got to get done. And Greg is here, if you have any questions on this.
Comments or questions for me? Call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2018-252.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2019-34 for the purchase of a truck for the Parks and Recreation Department Landscape Division from Gilly Hyde Ford Incorporated of Glasgow, Kentucky, in the amount of $63,234.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
This one is pretty self-explanatory, but Parks is needing a replacement landscape truck. We went out for bid, only got one bid from Gilly Hyde. That bid was a little over budget, so we went back and negotiated something less and bring this forward to you tonight. Recommending Gilly Hyde again for this truck for $63,234. And if you have any questions, Brent's here.
Call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2018-253.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-40 for the purchase of a generator and transfer switch from Nixon Power Services LLC of Brentwood, Tennessee, in the amount of $31,980.
So moved.
By Williams, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
I'd not forbid for a generator for NCS Building. I think they're the only city building without a backup generator. We've just kind of been putting it off. We got seven bids, and this company out of Brentwood, Nixon Power Services, was our lowest bid at $31,980. They meet all the specifications that we put out, and I recommend them for approval.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2018-254.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a beverage agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Clark Beverage Group Incorporated Kentucky Division.
So moved.
Second by Nash.
Back in 2014, we struck a deal with Clark Beverage for soft drink vendors for sales of soft drink beverages at our Parks facilities. You all approved a five-year deal with them back in 2013, and that agreement also allowed for an extension for three additional years. We've had very good success with Clark Beverage. They're agreeing to maintain all their current pricing and current revenue sharing with the current contract. And we would ask, we're asking tonight to go ahead and just extend this contract for three additional years. Brent Belcher's here, again, if you have any questions on this. I think Gene may have worked on the original agreement as well.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning, I'm sorry, Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018-47.
Ordnance rezoning real estate. Ordnance rezoning attractive land containing 1.83 acres from HI Highway Industrial to GB General Business located at 3031 Nashville Road, presently owned by Providence Homes Kentucky LLC and Matthew Crabtree.
So moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Williams. This is the first reading of a recommendation from the Planning Commission on a unanimous vote for rezoning. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Peterson's here, if you have any.
That's going to be a really nice addition. Improvement, yeah.
Call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams. Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-255.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the Downtown Science Project Management Agreement between the City of Bowling Green and the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
As you know, we have completed our. As you know, we have completed our first phase of our wayfinding signs around town. I think they really, really did a really good job with those. They look really nice. We are ready to go forward with our Phase Two and Phase Three. We have been working with our Visitors Bureau, Convincing Visitors Bureau, on this project, and the, the lead person on their side is Mr. Jeff Moore. I think he's here with us tonight. I'd like to ask him to come up and present the plans for Phase Two, what we're going to be doing, and tell you a little bit more about this, the continuation of our, our project.
Good evening. Phase one, of course, was ninety-three wayfinding signs that were distributed throughout the city as well as out into the county. Now we're into Phase Two and Phase Three. Phase Two will be what we will call the gateway signs, the welcome to the downtown signs. Those will be five signs total. Four of those will be freestanding, and one will be placed as a face on the CVS Western sign that is right there at the split of Kentucky and Adams there at Western Kentucky University. The other four locations will be at, first in Kentucky, right there near the river. There will be another location at Broadway and the Bypass, there in the Walgreens Corner, and then two bookend locations on either side of the Sixth and Seventh Street splits, there at the Fairview at the fire station, and then also just near the ballpark there at the Sixth and Seventh Split. So that's Phase Two, will be these welcome to Bowling Green downtown signs. Those are the gateway signs. Now, then we move into Phase Three, which we were looking at kiosk signs. These were signs for pedestrian scale. As you were coming into downtown, you're parking your car, you would look at one of these signs and say, okay, you are here, here's everything around you, kind of giving you a frame of reference. In that discussion, especially as active as our downtown is, well, our entire city, we were looking at maybe static signs are not the best way to go. Maybe, maybe one version of static would be fine, but was there any possibility that we could have electronic kiosks? We've located a vendor that is working with the City of Louisville, as well as the City of Little Rock, Arkansas, and Kansas City that have installed these, these signs, they call them city posts, that are basically large tablets that are interactive, that the community can go up to and say, okay, where am I, what's going on, and where are these things located as far as where I'm concerned at that city post's location? So we are looking at Phase Three of talking to the city post people and saying, hey, is this possible that Bowling Green can enter into this market also? And if not with city posts, are there other vendors out there doing what we call the electronic kiosk? What we visualize for Phase Three is probably a mixture of static signs as well as these electronic kiosks, probably for a total of about twelve locations that we're looking at spread throughout downtown Bowling Green. So that, in a nutshell, is basically Phase Two and Phase Three for our wayfinding system. We nicknamed it TAWS, the Tourist Activity Wayfinding System, so.
Comments or questions?
Just curious, there's a company locally called Iconic, and that's the kind of work that they do. I don't know that they handle outdoor things, but, but it's right at, at the, at the research center at the, what we call the old mall. Worth, worth speaking to him.
Yes, we definitely want to look at some local vendors as well as, you know, the national vendors. When Vicky Fitch and I were talking about the static signs and the problem with them, of the fact that we are so dynamic in our city, that, you know, you put one up there and then all of a sudden something will change, and we were like, wouldn't it be nice if it could be electronically fashioned in such a way that it could be interactive and you could change that information? And lo and behold, you know, it's, it's basically, these things are large tablets. And we got to talking to Louisville, they've had theirs installed, I was in Kansas City and saw theirs. So this is new and emerging technology that, and just in the year of discussion, has all of a sudden appeared.
Comments or questions?
On the static signs, you, you talked about how, you know, you can't change them or changing them is difficult. Of the existing signs that are, how do new vendors get, get on those signs?
On the, the wayfinding signs that we have out there currently, we'll have to work through the CVB on the, on the ninety-three that are out there for the wayfinding. And if we have a new attraction, we'll have to see if it meets the criteria of the attractions that are out there currently, and then see how we can fit them into the system. It's not a trailblazing system, it's more of a wayfinding system. Wherever you are, what is close to you is basically the question. So it, it would be not just one sign, it could be a nest of signs throughout the city that might need to be changed to accommodate a, a new attraction.
So if somebody were a, a new attraction, you, they, they should contact the CVB to start that discussion.
Definitely.
Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
First reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen forty-eight.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter Four alcoholic beverage control of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to authorize additional classes of licenses authorized by state law to revise one fee to comply with state law and further authorize the city alcoholic beverage control administrator to obtain criminal backgrounds on applicants for licenses.
I'll move.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
This is somewhat of a cleanup of Chapter Four, and I'd like to allow Jean to kind of give you an overview of what we're doing here.
That's exactly what this is, just a cleanup. We can only issue ABC licenses authorized by state law. They also control the maximum fee that we can charge. In reviewing the state statute, there were two ordinance, two licenses that we did not have on our list, so we need to add the qualified historic site license with a maximum fee of one thousand thirty dollars per year for that one. And the authorized to public consumption license, we believe, it's not real clear what that one is, we believe that goes with the quad cycles, which we have not approved. So we'd have, that license will be there if the city ever wanted to do those, we'd have to come in with additional language to authorize that as well. If you remember, those are statutes that came in like a year ago, kind of the mobile bicycles or whatever you want to call them, the cycle, and we have not authorized that. I don't think there's been interest in it. If we did, that would be the license they would get, but we still would have to come in with, with additional language to authorize that. This by itself does not do that. May have good. One we did, we found our special temporary alcoholic beverage auction license. We were charging two hundred dollars per year. State statute says you only do one hundred dollars, so we thought it'd be nice to comply with state law, so we're amending that one down. And the last one, the, the ABC administrator probably already has the authority, but by state statutes, you can get an ABC license only if you've not been convicted of a felony and maybe a couple misdemeanors related to ABC stuff. We're not sure exactly what the state's doing now about, in the past, they did background checks. We're hearing they may not do those in the future. May just having people sign sworn affidavits that they comply. We thought it would be a good idea, maybe since we issue a local license, and the ABC administrator locally follows a good idea to reserve. We probably already had the authority to do it, but actually put the language in our ordinance that our ABC administrator can also seek and obtain criminal background searches on applicants, since they're actually serving alcohol here. I think we might be nice to be able to, to make sure they comply with state law without just a sworn affidavit that we actually do a check. And that's the changes.
Questions? Roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen forty-nine.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter Two administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to make various administrative changes.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
This is a, kind of a mixed bag of changes for Chapter Two, but again, some of these are cleanup items, but again, I'd like to defer to Jean and/or Katie. Katie worked on this along with Marilyn on some of these, some of the parts of this as well as Jean, so I'd let, like to let them give you an overview.
I'll, I'll take the first one. We're working on the process of updating our Purchasing Policy Procedures Manual, and as we started looking at some of the information in that, and we will have that for you at the December eighteenth meeting, we were looking at the level of approval that the city manager has in terms of purchasing. Currently, it's anything below twenty-five thousand dollars the city manager can approve, and anything above twenty-five thousand dollars comes to the Board of Commissioners. And going back and looking the past two years at some of the board actions that you've taken, in two thousand seventeen, the calendar year two thousand seventeen, there were ninety-three purchasing or contract-related items that would fall under this category, but only twenty-four of those actually were below fifty thousand dollars. So only about twenty-six percent of those actions that you've previously taken would be removed from Board of Commissioners' approval and allowed for the city manager to approve. And then in two thousand eighteen, the calendar year, we had eighty such purchasing and contract-related actions by the board. Twenty-one of those would have fallen below the fifty thousand dollar threshold. Again, a twenty-six percent decrease into what the Board of Commissioners would potentially need to approve if you allow this to go to the city manager. Some examples of those purchases would be police ammunition, that came in at around thirty-four thousand dollars a year. We had some various software maintenance renewals and some small, new software purchases, a generator replacement, like what's on tonight's agenda, thirty-five thousand dollar generator replacement. Certain vehicles, if we're purchasing just one vehicle or two vehicles and it falls before, below fifty thousand dollars, those could be done potentially by the city manager. Cumulatively, if there is three or four or five vehicles or pieces of equipment and altogether they cost more than fifty thousand, that would come to the Board of Commissioners. We did some street stripings, the WKU leaf composting agreement potentially, some architectural engineering services for small renovation projects. When we purchased Salt and De-Isar, there was a parking lot paving project we did, there were some repair services for some HVAC equipment, some small-scale drainage and construction improvement projects. We purchased some aluminum benches for Parks and Recreation, the security camera equipment, and some computer equipment, and then some HVAC control upgrades. So those are just some examples. If the purchase would be below fifty thousand dollars, what we're proposing is that the city manager had the ability to go forth with those approvals. It would allow us to move faster through some of these projects. We wouldn't have to wait two weeks or a week to get to the Board of Commissioners for approval before we could issue a purchase order and follow through on those purchases.
I recall none of those have a dissenting vote in, in, in any of those occasions, and they're all just normally routine purchases.
Correct. And we did, this language does not preclude the city manager to bring any item below fifty thousand to the board if he felt that he should do that. So he still has that ability. It just gives him a little bit higher level of authority to approve some items. We would also allow the purchasing manager, procurement manager, to be able to prove from, currently she has a twenty thousand dollar threshold, we would move her up to twenty-five thousand. So that's just a five thousand dollar change for her approval, but anything over twenty-five thousand would, up to fifty, would then be the city manager.
All of the current expectations toward procurement bidding and et cetera would still remain in place?
That is correct. Anything by state statute, anything over twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars or over has to be bid out, so that process would not change.
It would have to be approved in the, in that current year budget as well, or through a budget amendment?
I would say that probably ninety-nine percent of all of the items I listed were all included in the budget. Very few things kind of come up last minute, but there occasionally some things like that could happen. Most of those, I'm sure the city manager would probably vet with you ahead of time, or we would have talked about those in a budget amendment or some other action taken or a change in the CIP multi-year projects.
Comments or questions?
That's the first portion of this change.
Yeah, and the other things are very minor. I think the police chief is here, he's changing one of his divisions to Logistics Division. I think he thought there's a better name. And then in the office of city clerk, Ashley could probably address it, but we put in language that the assistant city clerk, who we just hired a couple of weeks ago and has just started, I met for the first time tonight, is authorized to execute documents, to attest documents executed by the mayor or other officials on behalf of the, of the city in the absence of the city clerk. Just make sure if Ashley's out of town, we have to have something authenticated. Assistant city clerk can do that.
Thank you. Bringing the whole, the entire change? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, and if you'll give me just a moment here of personal privilege, would you come back up? Greg will let you introduce the young lady sitting beside you there. Mr., I believe this is her first meeting with us, and it'd be a good opportunity for her to say hello.
We have unfortunately lost Vicky Fitch as our Tourism Executive Director, but we have fortunately with us this evening Sheri Murphy, who is our new Executive Director for Tourism.
Right up. Give us just a little bit of brief about you.
I, I think I've met almost all of you except for Commissioner Williams at different places. Vicky's been dragging me around town for the last three weeks, so it's kind of been a whirlwind, but this is my first week on my own. I did serve in this capacity in Elizabethtown for three weeks shy of nineteen years, so I do have a little experience in this area, just a different community, and I'm originally from Logan County, so I feel like I'm coming home. But thank you for being so welcoming tonight, and it's been very educational. So, great meeting.
Educational, interesting term, thank you. Good to have you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that, I appreciate it. That's the last item on our agenda. We do have public comments available tonight, and I think Jennifer, you're the first on our list, if you want to come up, please. Jennifer, come on up, you're first on our list, please.
My name is Jennifer. But this time I have nighted way. I card in nighted way, and I'm trying to get ahold of them right now, and I'm going to ask them if they consider donating the money that you give to them to the housing department in life scales. So I'm going to see if they do that. If they do, then, then maybe donate some of the money and stuff like that to the housing department in life scales. So that's going to solve the other problem, but if they don't do it, then we need to give money to the homeless department in life scales. We do. Okay? Two, the police, the transportation needs to be changed in, over at Lover's Lane, needs to be changed in Lover's Lane. They need a five o'clock bus, and I've been trying to get you to do this, and I would like for you to have a meeting with the director about that five o'clock bus, because businesses are going to be moving in there, they need to be changed. Three, the fairness committee, the fairness should be passed, but the fourth one is the most important one, and Patty is going to help me get a property tax for the cops, and I'm going to try to talk to Patty this afternoon about that, the cops. I really believe they should have double pay on holidays, and if you can't do that and you can't hire a person for police reports, then at least do this, at least have a dinner for the police on Christmas Day. And I can cook it and stuff like that, and I don't have the money for the meal, but I can get donations and stuff like that if you don't want to give me the money. But I would like a dinner for the cops, because they have done so much for this area. They have stayed strong and they have done so much, and we, the holiday pay, if we can't afford that, at least give them a meal. So, but anything else, anything else is, that's it, that's it, but everything else is, and I'm doing this because I'm losing the woman I love in the drug world, and I want cops to be strong.
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Jeremy McFarland, you're next, please.
Hi. Last month, I and some friends were saying goodbye to one another after a meeting on campus when some young men started shouting homophobic hate speech at us through the window of their car. We ignored them, which seemed to only encourage them. As they drove past us, the passenger threw a red solo cup full of beer at us, which I watched fly between the shoulders of my friends and then land on the sidewalk in front of me. Thankfully, we were not directly hit, though one of my friends got some beer on his jacket. I'm grateful that we were together, as this would have been extremely frightening to face alone. While this was the first time I've had something thrown at me, it is far While this was the first time I've had something thrown at me, it is far from the first time I've had hate speech shouted at me and friends while walking around town at night. These very acts of hate and intimidation are unfortunately commonplace. A city's laws and ordinances serve as guidelines for what is and isn't acceptable behavior. While I have no illusions that passing a fairness ordinance would suddenly end all anti-LGBT acts of hate, acts of hate in our community, I know that it would change the way it feels to be on the receiving end of that kind of intimidation. It would make a clear statement that this sort of behavior is unacceptable in our city. I have faith that in the future Bowling Green will have a city commission full of positive role models willing to stand unequivocally against hate and discrimination. I hope that in the new year and following the most recent election, our city commission will cease enabling the intimidation and alienation of Bowling Green's LGBTQ citizens by passing a fairness ordinance. Thank you.
Farland? I believe you're up. On behalf of the city, we congratulate you on your election to the 20th district.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much. I am looking forward to working with you and members of this commission on issues where the state and local governments partner. So we've got one coming up. I'm very excited about that. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Representative-elect Patty Mentor, and I support fairness. As we think about the lessons of this election year and the new faces, both in Frankfurt and here in City Hall, we're here to remind you that for the LGBTQ community, both in Bowling Green and around the state, this symbolic new start is also an unpleasant reminder of the ongoing problem that LGBTQ citizens do not have basic equal rights protections in employment, in housing, and in public accommodations. So as we look ahead to 2019, continuing to allow legal discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity is not only unacceptable, but it puts our city at a major disadvantage. As one community member recently told you, bigotry is bad for business. For the past two years, the National Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index has clearly shown that the failure to pass basic anti-discrimination protections harms our city's economic development. On an index that's used by almost all major corporations, Bowling Green has received a score of 17, the lowest score of eight Kentucky cities that were surveyed. Passing a fairness ordinance would raise our score immediately, and it would show potential employers and employees that our leaders understand that bigotry is bad for business and Bowling Green is a city that welcomes all people. Now, a lot has changed since I last spoke in January of this year. Two new cities have passed fairness ordinances, Paducah and Maysville, because they realize that not only is bigotry bad for business, but they understand that protecting equal rights and human dignity of all citizens is exactly what city governments should do. Maysville passed their ordinance unanimously, and an 11th city may join them soon. Now, in October, we had our second annual Bowling Green Pride Festival, and it attracted over 3,000 people, even more than last year's, and we loved having Commissioner Nash join us, and we hope all of you will join us at next year's. And in November, voters confirmed what those of us who have been walking doors all year already knew. The people of Bowling Green are ready for fairness. This evening, Jeremy has shared with you his lived experience with discrimination, as have over 100 people in the last two and a half years. The people of Bowling Green want fairness, and they want it now. So it's time to start the new year on the right foot by doing the right thing, and let's catch up to what 10 other cities have already done to protect their citizens here in Kentucky. May our new city commission make 2019 the year that they pass fairness and guarantee equal rights and basic human dignity for our LGBTQ community. This is our New Year's resolution, and it should be yours as well. Thank you very much.
Last person I have on our public comments section. Regular meeting is scheduled for December 18th, 2018. Thank you for tuning in.